I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 4th, 2024 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Fanslaw. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
A copy of the Opens Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. Papillion Days is almost here. The kickoff event is next Wednesday, the 12th, at City Park. It starts at 4:30 with the Family Fun Night at City Park. And then just a couple of the other highlights are the fireworks at dark on Friday night. And then the parade is Saturday, June 15th. And if you guys remember, last year they moved the time up to 10:00 a.m. to beat the heat. And I think we also beat the rain last year, but I don't want to jinx it. And it's going to be at 10:00 a.m. again this year. And then don't miss the PAC Bands performance on Sunday, June 16th, at 8:00 p.m. at Sumter to close out Papillion Days. So a lot of exciting events happening next week. And as with past years in conjunction with Papillion Days, the Landing is holding its annual Community Appreciation Week all next week. So the punch cards are half-priced. There's free drop-in turf times. And then there are several open house and appreciation events and raffles going on as well. So if you guys get a chance to check that out, that would be great. And then to recap, last Saturday, on June 1st, we had the Library's Summer Reading Program Kickoff Event. Just like last year was a great event, there are estimating around 300 people attended. Thank you to the library staff, recreation staff, and the parks staff that all made that a great community event. And then the Recreation Department's Summer Day Camps have also started, so a sign of being in full swing for summer. They're being held at the Landing in the Terra Hills Park. And I do want to give a big shout-out thank you to our community partners, the Papillion Volunteer Fire Department, PVFD, Inc. Again, this year is graciously allowing us to hold day camps with our littles at their building there at Terra Hills. So we greatly appreciate the partnership that they do. And then I just want to give you a quick update on the city's Papio Bay Pool Options Study that we're working with JEO to complete. If you guys remember, we did a community pool need survey, and that's been completed and closed. We've surveyed users and then people in the community. And now the Steering Committee is going through those results with JEO. And the Steering Committee includes community members, pool users, parents, and then city staff. Mark, Mayor Black, and myself are all part of that survey or that committee to go through that, that Steering Committee. And we will be bringing back in July and August to the Public Facilities Committee and the FNA recommendations for that. So all eight of you elected officials will have an ability to have an input on that. And then we'll have public input in September. So just keeping you guys updated on how that's moving along, and then we'll keep you updated as that progresses. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Fanslow. Mr. Sunday, did you want to poll C4 and C5? Okay, C and 4 and 5 are polled. Any others? Do we have any proponents or opponents on the consent agenda? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six, eight, zero, eight.
Motion passes. C4 and C5 are somewhat related, but Item C4, Resolution R24-01-01, a resolution to approve a supplemental agreement to the Professional Services Agreement for Preliminary Engineering Services for the Highway 370 underpass, 114th to 120th Street, project with Alfred Binisch and Company. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R24-01-01? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Fanslow. Proponents or opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Sunday. Oh, can you turn your mic on, please? Thank you.
I would ask Mr. Kleffner to step up to the mic and answer a few questions, and then I'll have some comments, I guess. This is out on the Highway 370 between 114th and 120th Street, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we had initially had an underpass project for connectivity to the trail system. Is that correct, for the new SID neighborhoods?
Yeah, the project would include an underpass under 370, a trail from that underpass north to collect to Lincoln Road, and then that trail also goes south to connect to an NRD trail that did end just within the SID south of 370.
And as I explained to you earlier, what caught my attention was the big increase in costs that apparently is going on.
For the contract, yes. The change in the contract itself, this item and the next item, the feds kind of have a different way of going through scoping of their contracts. They allow the consultants to bill for their time to scope it to prevent any additional, what we call consultant work orders later on, just because of the size of the contracts and the issues when you deal with a fed aid project can get complicated. So to eliminate the potential need for CWO's later on, which delay the project, they scope that upfront, which is why that initial cost was low. And then now it's more within line what a design would actually be for a project of that size.
Okay, and just to try to stay out of the weeds, I'm going to fast-forward to the conclusion of our conversation earlier. Initially, we were looking at this as about a $3 million project. Now it's what?
Now it's closer to 10 to 12 million.
10 to 12 million?
Yes, sir.
And this isn't benefiting current Papillion residents, is it? It's people out in the SIDs?
The project, yes, is out in the SIDs. It can benefit, I, when you say the people closest to the project, yes, would be SID, SID residents. The trail connects to the network, though, that all citizens have access to.
Sure, they have access, but it's connecting the SID neighborhoods to the trail system.
Yes, sir.
It benefits directly the people that live in the SID neighborhoods, not the people that are going to be footing the bill, which are the residents of Papillion, Nebraska.
The SIDs that are there are under contract for a portion of it, but the city, after the increase and with the project costs and everything else, the city would be on the foot for about, estimate of about $2 million.
$2 million?
Yes.
So, and I understand the federal government pays for a good portion of this, but $2 million is coming out of this, from the taxpayers of Papillion?
Yes, sir.
And it doesn't benefit any of the current taxpayers?
Not at this point in time, no.
Okay, thank you. I'm urging all of you not to vote for this, for the reasons, obviously, that we're looking at something 20 years down the road when those SIDs are finally annexed, before actual Papillion residents get any benefit. $2 million, we shouldn't throw around $2 million like it's nothing. We have a responsibility. We're stewards of the taxpayer money. And even though we're getting some federal dollars for this, I just think that's too much money to be throwing away on a 20-year benefit. So I'm voting against it. I urge the rest of you to do so as well.
As to why we should vote against it, because it seems like we're drawing a line between current Papillion residents and future Papillion residents. And saying we don't care as much about the quality of life of future Papillion residents, that if you're not here now, tough, you're the only ones we care about with our money. I don't buy into that philosophy, if that's what's happening here. I understood that, you know, that the developments we create out there will be the future of Papillion. And I've always felt that that's one of the things we should be paying attention to, is the quality of life in the future Papillion. And, you know, if we don't do this now, you know, the future changes and doesn't become the same quality as it could. So I'm going to instead focus on, this is something we can do now to make life better for the people who, in the future, will be paying the same taxes as we do. And so I'm going to vote for it.
Mr. Fanslow.
Thanks, Mayor. I tend to agree more along with Tom's line of thinking, but Mike, not to put you on the spot, is, can you think of another example of where we spend city taxpayer dollars on projects that are in our ETJ? Something similar? Rhodes, tell me. Just, I put you on the spot, but I'm curious that this isn't the only time we've done something like this, or has, is it?
We collect fees that could be used outside of the city area, for instance, ACIP fees and things along those lines. A lot of times what we do is that we come into what would be called like cost share agreements with SIDs, where they agree to a portion, we agree to a portion for this. That's where this kind of came into play, was originally when this project was scoped, it was a $3 million project. The SIDs in the surrounding area agreed to a portion of it that came to that. And then now that during the scoping of the actual project, after it was originally selected for funding, the state, there wasn't clear communication on how it was going to be constructed. It went from a possible boring to, we have to open cut the project. So it went from a $3 million to a $10 million project. Well, the SIDs are kind of limited on that. Going for a future look at it, and I guess this is more of a situation when you look at a community benefit, this is going to connect to the trail infrastructure that goes to Warner Park and the Generations area. It also connects trails to our downtown area. So while the trail itself is not within city limits, it does connect it to SIDs that actually give us, give us, give people access to our tax-paying areas.
Sure, yeah, we're building that trail network through SIDs.
Through SIDs to get to our downtown area and things along those lines.
So I'll ask a question, either Mike or maybe Travis. Was the underpass proposed by the developer at the time, or did through our review process at the pre-up stage and at the approval stage, did we suggest, or did we agree that it should be put in?
Mr. Gibbons?
Yeah, it was mutual, but from my understanding, this has been in the plan for many, many years, and so before even my time, there was, when these SIDs were being developed in the pre-up stages with city, there was contributions by the SIDs for this trail network to come in the future as well. So it's been a master planned project for probably at least 10 years, I would say, at this point in time. So again, it's been master planned for a future trail connection.
And keep in mind that this was, this being part of the master plan, the NRD, along with other funding, already built a trail to a point for this trail connection to happen. So there's been commitments previously to get this trail there.
Actually, what I was going to mention, Mr. Kleffner just mentioned, in theory, I agree with Councilman Sunday. We need to be careful about spending money outside the city limits, but practically speaking, I think it's a good idea to do it. Because as you mentioned, the question I was going to ask you, that's part of our master trail system. So it's not exactly accurate to say citizens aren't going to get any use out of it, because it's outside city limits. Hopefully, if people use it in the trail system, as they seem to really do, they are going to use it, because it's connected with all of our internal trail systems. So for that reason, I want to vote for it.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I'm going to vote for it also. I can think of a couple other situations where the city provided funding for projects outside. I think Warner Park was one where the city provided funding. I believe the Tower District, the city provided funding for that particular project. I can think of a Splash Plaid, if I'm not mistaken, in the Eagle area that we provided some funding for. So I, it is, no question about it, a pretty significant increase in costs. And I guess, Mr. Kleffner, one of the questions I would have for you is, what's proposed from the standpoint of the timing of the overall project?
The timing of the overall project is, is that I anticipate this, this should be a minimal environmental impact. They've already said it's a low-level cat X. So I'm estimating it'll be about a year to go through that process. Most of the right-of-way is on what I would call developer-owned properties, so they've agreed to provide that as part of the project. So that should be pretty straightforward. So I anticipate about a year, year and a half to go through that, another year, for another six months for right-of-way. So within two years, we'll start construction. And then the construction, construction will be not easy. I'll say that. It'll be a full year. We'll have to reconstruct about a mile of 370 as part of the project.
Mr. Sunday.
I respect the master plan, but let me just pose a question. This is a three or four-fold increase in the cost of what we anticipated when we drew up the master plan. What if it were 20 times more? Would we still be married to that master plan? At what point do we rationalize and say, we can't spend this money? Ask yourself that, because I think this is obscene. That's all I have.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five, eight, one, day by Sunday.
Motion passes. Item C5, Resolution R24-01-02, a resolution to approve a supplemental agreement to the Professional Services Agreement for Environmental Engineering Services for the Highway 370 underpass, 114th to 120th Street, project with Alfred Binisch. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R24-01-02? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Any other council discussion? Carry all the comments over from the previous one for the minutes.
Carry my comments over, please. Thank you.
I will. You're welcome. I will make sure we do that for the minutes. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Five, eight, one, day by Sunday.
Motion passes. If there is no objection of council, I want to bring Item F12 forward. It's a liquor license. And I'm not sure you want to sit through the entire meeting when it's probably a real quick item. So if there's no objection, we'll do Item F12 next. Ms. Brown, are you ready? Okay. Item F12, Resolution R24-0093. It's a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class I liquor license for Jewel Banquet and Catering, doing business as the fireside, 841 Terra Plaza, and the manager application for Julie Maven-Durrell. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents, and I know the applicant is here, you want to give a little bit of commercial of what you're doing? Come on up. And if you'd state your name and address for the record. You got an audience, so you can do a commercial.
Julie Maven-Durrell. I live at 1802 Walnut Creek Drive. I am back with the fireside, I guess is the way to put it. So I had Karen's Fireside at 1214 Monroe Street. Some people here helped me put that all together. I sold that, so that's now daycare, moved it to Terra Plaza about five years ago, and sold it three years ago. And the gals that bought it no longer want it. If I did not take it back, it would be closing. So I thought, the Lions Club meets there once a month. I'm a member. We have other members in the room here. There, you know, weddings, birthday parties. We've had all kinds of graduation parties here in May. So I took it back. So it's still open. I, you know, I plan to keep it as long as possible, until somebody else that loves this business is going to take it over from me. Because many of you know I was going to retire last year, but you know, that doesn't happen, I guess.
And for people that don't know you, before that, it was, you had the Grishin Euro that ran after your father had passed away. So thank you for all you've done for Papillion in that area.
Quick question.
Mr. Sunday.
What's your capacity there?
The fire marshal was just there. It's 99.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So it's a good, you know, it's not real big, but it's not real small either. Perfect for smaller weddings, graduation parties, things like that. We are going to do some pop-up events starting next Monday, because it is pretty slim with our bookings. So that's a big thing, if everybody in the community can really rally to keep this place open, because I think we have a couple other party rooms in Papillion that are closing this year. So it's been a tough business. So I'm going to be creative and try and bring some other things here to the event center to keep it open.
Thank you very much for all you do.
Okay.
Are there any proponents or opponents?
I'm sorry.
I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R24-0093? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Six, eight, zero, eight.
Motion passes. Thank you. Back to the regular agenda. Item F1, Ordinance 1975. It's a public hearing and a vote. An ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Section 205-218G, having to do with golf course fences. The applicant is Councilmember Tom Mumgarth. This public hearing was held May 21st, and it was not closed, so it does remain open. I'll call for any proponents, but Mr. Mumgarth, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just wanted to let everybody know that after last week, we had a very productive meeting with the people who were interested in this ordinance. And I intend to modify my ordinance, and as a result of the views that were expressed, I can't, couldn't get this, that done for today. It won't be modified and through an amendment until the next meeting. But the amendment will basically say, no fences beyond the back wall of the house for the lots that are on the golf course. If that amendment passes, well, then that will mean that there were no fences at all in the backyards of the golf course lots. But I can't do that tonight, so I'll do that next week. At the end of the public hearing tonight, I'll just make a motion to lay over, to postpone the third reading and the vote until the next city council meeting.
And with that, the agenda was published with the public hearing on it, and the public hearing is still open, so we'll go ahead and call for any proponents, any opponents, or neutral. Anybody want to speak? And if, when you come up, if you'd state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Patricia Conway, 1004 West Centennial Road, which happens to be on Terra Hills Golf Course. I'd like to thank the members of the city council for taking time to listen to concerns about the fence ordinance on the municipal golf courses. The ordinance regarding fences on the Papillion golf courses is a simple, one-sentence ordinance. Golf course fences. Fences shall not be permitted between the building line of the principal structure and a lot line that is adjacent to the municipal golf course. Then there are two exceptions, pools and some specific lots on Eagle Hills. This is a very simple ordinance. The key word is adjacent. I looked up the definition of adjacent. I was pretty sure I still knew from geometry what adjacent meant, but I looked it up, so there would be no misunderstanding. Based on Oxford's Language Dictionary, adjacent is defined as next to or adjoined to something else. The back lot of a golf course home is next to the golf course, so it is adjacent to the golf course. The side lot lines are adjoined to the golf course, because they run the length of the property line, and they adjoin at the end to the golf course. And therefore, they are also adjacent to the golf course. Therefore, based on the ordinance, there can be no fences between the building line of the house and the adjacent back lot line, and there can be no fences between the building line of the house and the adjacent side lot line. This ordinance clearly prohibits fences on the back of the golf course property and/or on the side of the golf course property. Anyone that has a fence on the back of their property or on the side of their property are not in compliance with this ordinance. The city of Papillion takes painstaking measures to maintain the aesthetics of the city golf courses. The properties that back up to those golf courses are extensions of that aesthetic. The aesthetics of a golf course are about the golfer's experience. Everybody wants the golfers to have an excellent experience, so they continue to utilize the golf courses. This ordinance is an attempt to maintain the aesthetics of the golf course experience, the golfer's experience. Golfing is not just about hitting a ball in a hole. It's about the experience of the course. You ask any golfer, how was the golf day went? He'll tell you how beautiful the course was, how well it was maintained, the fence, I mean, not the fence lines. He'll talk about the tree lines, and the golf course is an experience. And past city council members understood that, and that's why these ordinance was, were put in place. If the aesthetics of the golf course and its surrounding areas are not maintained, the city, the golfers, and the homeowners are all adversely affected. The present language of this ordinance needs to be, remain, needs to remain intact to assure that all parties can continue to benefit. This ordinance also needs to be enforced by the city. I have not spoken to one resident that resides on the golf course that is unreasonable about finding a solution regarding the people that presently have fences. But no one that I have spoken to wants violations of this ordinance to be perpetuated into the future. Let's work together to maintain the present ordinance, so that no additional fences can be built, then actually enforce the ordinance, while finding a solution in dealing with the fences that presently exist. Mistakes have been made regarding this ordinance, but these mistakes should not be allowed to be perpetuated into the future. We should not be ignoring the more than 99% of the people that comply with this ordinance in favor of the less than 1% that are not in compliance with the ordinance. There are several residents here tonight that are willing to discuss solutions if council members want to work to arrive at a solution for those people that presently have fences, but we are not in favor of changing this ordinance.
Mr. Sunday.
I have a question, Ms. Conway. I'm curious what your thoughts are on, what do you think the city should do with a homeowner that has an existing fence that was approved by the city mistakenly, admittedly?
Well, yeah, like I said, mistakes have been made.
So what should the city do with regard to those residents that in good faith built a fence with the city's permission years ago?
So my solution would be, first off, I would like a letter written to everybody that lives on the golf courses. This is the ordinance, and this is what it means. You can't have fences because of this. However, we have some people that have mistakenly been allowed to have those, and we are going to, if you had a fence by a certain date, I don't know, May 1, 2024, you get to keep your fence. We would request that when you leave the property, you remove it. Because I know somebody made the statement that, once you give them a building permit, you can't then make them remove the fence when they sell their lot, or whatever, because they got a building permit, even though they got the building permit because somebody wasn't enforcing the ordinance. But you could request that they remove it, and I would imagine most people would be
Mr. Stube.
Good at doing that.
Yeah, I just want to expand a little bit on Mr. Sunday's question, and maybe this is more for Travis, from the perspective is that if the city lawfully permitted somebody to build a fence...
But you didn't. You violated the ordinance by doing it.
We can agree to disagree, but if an individual property owner was given a permit by the city to build a fence, whether it was interpreted differently or not, the question to the city would be, if that particular fence was damaged, what would be the result of the property owner coming to the city and saying, I need to repair that particular fence?
Public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and take public testimony, but let's note the question, so it can be answered. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And just a reminder for everybody, this is a continuation of last month's public hearing, so all of the comments from the last meeting are being carried over to this one for the, for the purpose of the minutes. But if you do have something new to share, you are welcome. And I'm not sure if I gave the reminder that we have a five-minute limit on speaking, but that was within it, so thank you. Any other proponents, anybody else, or neutral? Welcome. And again, if you state your name and address for the record.
My name is Pam Mertz, and I live at 323 Castle Pine Circle on Eagle, in Eagle Hill subdivision, which is on a golf course. And I was here two weeks ago, and I absolutely totally agree with what Patty just said, because the ordinance is clearly stated that there's no golf courses, and there's two exceptions. It doesn't say, but we can have side fences. And how I feel like this all started, and maybe I'm the one that, you know, poked the hornet's nest, or whatever. But what happened is I got on the HOA in 2021, and then I joined a golf league and noticed that we had fences on our golf, two fences on our golf course. So as an HOA board member, we discussed it. We sent them violation letters, and we were told that the city had given them permits. And basically, we said, there's no, there's no golf courses on, or no fences on golf courses. There's not supposed to courses, there's not supposed to be. So I contacted, I don't know what department actually, but I contacted somebody to, that was in the department of looking up if they were, if permits were given. And the permits had been given. And when I said, but it says in the ordinance that no, uh, fences are allowed on golf course properties except these two reasons. And she came back and said, well, let me check with, I think it's like the planning director, possibly, I don't know, and I don't know who that was at the time, because I didn't know I should be writing everything down. And, um, basically, she ca- called me back and said, yes, side fences are allowed. I think, I think my biggest, okay, so I'm getting off track here. So then, come September of twenty twenty-two, like three days before it was supposed to be presented with the planning commission, I was notified that they were trying to pass this ordinance to allow fences that are attached to the back end of decks or whatever the furthest back area of a, uh, property is, decks included. And then you could attach a fence and run it to the ba- through the back, parallel to the back of the golf course and hook it on the side of your house, and that was considered a side fence. Okay, so this is what I'm thinking. Yes, there were some mistakes made and we are totally willing to accept that and we're totally willing to give waivers to those people. Yes, we'd like them removed if they were to move, um, out of the property, yes, we would, because it is really about the aesthetics of our golf course, like, like Patty was saying, so I don't want to be redundant on that. But the thing is, is if, if, I guess now all of a sudden, we're trying to determine the back edge of a, of a property. So Mr. Mumgarth just said he would present it as no rear fences in the back of the golf course properties. No, we don't want fences where you can see them at all on properties. We want no fences. And it already says it in the ordinance, I don't know why we need to change it to rear because that just opens up side fences. So, I mean, that's really where I'm coming down, what we're coming down to. And people that have bought, uh, properties on golf courses have spent more money on those lots, they love the aesthetics of it, it has nothing to do with prohibiting or or not allowing somebody to see the golf course, it has to do with the appearance of it. I live on a par three, uh, par three hole on Eagle Hills. My neighbors are very close behind me. I was sitting there today going, if they had one of those side fences that were permitted, and I know that, that's not what he's saying he's proposing, but in reality it is, if we're reestablishing the rear of our property for this side fence, it, the rear is the rear. I mean, whether, whether you put this side fence up, that is still the rear of the property. And you know, it's just, it's ridiculous that this is even going on again to me. I mean, I don't understand why this keeps happening over and over and coming up, so I'm just totally against it and all of my neighbors are as well that I have spoken to.
Thank you.
Mm-huh.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Steve Dolzall at one twenty-three Oakmont Plaza. And I was part of the meeting last Thursday at Eagle, I was gonna say Eagle Hills, but it's actually, um, Terra Hills. And I wanted to, to say thank you to our councilman and our planning director who did come to the meeting and talked to the residents. Uh, while it was definitely a contentious meeting, I think a lot of information was shared both ways and I certainly appreciated that and I look forward to Councilman Mumgarth's, uh, revised ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Glenn Rudney. I live at, uh, one two five Longwood Drive in Eagle Hills. I live on number seven, the par five, up towards the green, been there for over twenty years. Uh, thing I'd like to say is I don't know the reason why, I'm still trying to figure it out, why there's a pursuit on this to change it when it's a, it's a great ordinance, not because I live there, just in general, from being a golfer. And so many places, uh, golf courses, they've lost that thing, but having not fences has kind of retained that, uh, just the beauty of it, the landscape of the residence and everything. And I don't know why, um, this needs to be even looked at to change. I see no benefit of it, uh, at all for anyone. I also, I heard the word modify. All of a sudden, we're talking about dog runs and fences and now we're talking about a modification. So it can be thought about and be voted again at the next meeting, hopefully, hopefully it's voted on. And it's honestly looked at, uh, for the benefit of the people at Terra Hills and Eagle Hills on the golf course lot and the benefit for the city and golf course property. I think a lot of people here and also some people that aren't here are having a hard time digesting this and why it keeps be drug on for whatever reason, just to drag it on or to, to make people tired of it. Uh, we're not going to get tired of it. Uh, this is our neighborhood, this is our residence, we take care of it, we want to look good, everybody takes pride in those lots looking good for the golf course and themselves and the whole area as a whole. And why would you want to affect that? I, I have no idea. Uh, I, I can assume things, I haven't heard a lot of positive things, why fences should be up there. I haven't heard who, who is, what residents are pushing this, is it the existing fences? You know, mistakes happen, they were allowed, uh, fences, uh, but that, that can be solved, you know? But, uh, I wish tonight, I wish it was actually being voted on because I think it should be voted on. It's pretty well known that most of the residents oppose on golf course lots, oppose the fences. I see no reason why it can't be voted on promptly, promptly. I mean, it's, it's been long enough and there might be some reasons for it, I don't know, that's just my feelings and I know it's the feelings of the people behind me. I propose, since there was a proposal to modify it and not to vote on it, I propose it's be voted on tonight. Yes or no to not change the ordinance or to change the ordinance? I think it's, uh, the time is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mumgarth.
Uh, I, I would just, okay, just to clarify, um, I would sug- I would encourage everybody to go to the, um, ordinance that has been published on the internet, because it has two, it has pictures of attachments to the back of a house. And I would just simply point out that if this was voted on now or in the future, or in the future, and it was turned down, there would be two of these pictures that would allow a fence that would extend out to the outer edge of that deck project, that projects out. And that the quote, "side fence dog run" would be permitted in the, in picture number one and picture number two. If that, if the ordinance as proposed or the ordinance as I seek to amend it is voted down and the current situation, current ordinance exists, those two places will ha- can have that side little fence.
I want to hold that to council discussion, we're still in public hearing. Any other, anybody else, welcome.
Hi, my name is Mia Agner, I live at two five one nine Pinehurst Circle, I have a golf course lot. Um, I bought it in March of twenty twenty, I did not own a dog at that time. Um, I have an invisible fence and I have a dog now, it works well, it works fine. Um, I am not in favor of any fences on golf course lots, just because it looks great without the fences, there are other options if you need to contain an animal, so.
Thank you. Lot of familiar faces, welcome.
Good evening, um, my name is Carla Rue Piper, eight one two Bailey Drive, we live in Western Hills, uh, adjacent to the golf course. So, um, I do want to thank, we had three council members at the meeting on May thirtieth, very much appreciate Tom Mumgarth, Bob Stube, uh, David Fanslaw, and also Travis Gibbons as our planning director, they all came, we had approximately, uh, I'm guessing around twenty-five, uh, residents that were there. So from both Eagle and Terra, um, and Western Hills. So I think everyone there got a, a lot of feedback from the residents. And there were several shows of hands in terms of who's in favor of these fences on the golf course. Um, I bel- having lived at this residence and on the course for approximately twenty-eight years, um, and speaking with other residents, we've all lived with an understanding that there are no fences on the golf course slots. And, um, it was only recently that I realized that gee, based on the interpretation, um, of various, um, building codes that interplay with this particular ordinance, that we could have had, apparently in the past, a side yard fence. That was news to me. So there is a lot of confusion, um, but the consensus, I believe, at least of those that were able to come to that meeting, was that they really don't, the residents do not want golf course fences. And it was my understanding, and maybe I misunderstood, but we left that meeting with Councilman Mumgarth, um, indicating that he would, um, withdraw the ordinance, we'd go through this public hearing, because it would already be published and it was a continuation of the last city council meeting, but the, the ordinance would be withdrawn. And so I left and until, just an email that I received from, um, Tom Mumgarth here today, which he did send to the others that he collected their email addresses, um, I didn't realize there would be a vote, because I thought it would be withdrawn. So maybe that was a miscommunication that we had. Um, and it was my understanding that there would be an effort on the part of council members, um, and, um, Mr. Gibbons to work toward drafting a new ordinance that would address no fences on the course, um, as we had, I believe, discussed at that meeting. So I'm hearing we vote, I'm hearing we, we don't vote, um, there, and I'm offering maybe what we do is we really withdraw, ask council to with, or Mr. Mumgarth to withdraw the, um, the ordinance after the close of this public hearing and then we go back to the drawing board and draft what it should say. So that would be my offering.
Thank you, Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify. I apologize if, if you got the impression after our meeting that I was going to withdraw the ordinance. I, I can't withdraw the ordinance and achieve what people have been telling me. If I with- if I withdraw the ordinance, the current ordinance on the books stays in place and there will be two kinds of decks that people can add fences alongside of, period. And, you know, that's the way it's going to be. I don't want that either. I was trying to reduce that to only one kind of, of deck that would give the extra benefit. After hearing, you know, the, the people at the meeting, I am now going to say, okay, there will be no type of a deck that will allow you to have a fence outside of the back wall, beyond the back wall of your, of the house. And I'm going to go forward with that as an amendment to the current ordinance, because it gets it done in a way that I think will result in, uh, not allowing any fences on the lots in the backyard beyond the, behind the rear walls of the house. That's what I'm shooting for.
And, and I do understand what you're shooting for, but I don't know that that marries with what the golf course residents are wanting.
Well, if the golf, I'll just, if the golf-
They are looking for a broader solution than what you're proposing.
Well, and I'll tell you, that if the golf course residents want me to go the next step and say, you can't even have fences alongside the side of your house, that will mean that those houses cannot have any fences at all in their yards. I am not going to go that far.
Please, no comments in the audience.
I'm not going to go that far. Uh, my goal here is to preserve the openness of the land next to the golf course and dealing with the side of the houses doesn't have anything to do with that. So if somebody else wants to introduce that ordinance, fine, I just can't go there, thank you.
Mr. Gaines.
I just had a quick question. Did you say Western Hills?
Western Hills.
Okay. And do you guys have active covenants and an active HOA that?
We have perpetual covenants, we have a president, we have some officers, we do not meet regularly. I know that, you know, there's every subdivision, uh, former SID, they, they have different degrees of involvement. I would say that we are not heavily involved, but when something needs to happen, we do pull together. One of the last, uh, things that we addressed as an HOA was the changing of, uh, the, uh, wood shake roof. Uh, our covenants required shake roofs, but then the industry changed and we needed to, uh, give people more options. And so that required a three-quarter vote, we had, it walked the neighborhoods, it was a lot of work. But when we need to get something done, we pull together.
Okay. I was just curious as to what degree covenants played a part in this, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, please. Anybody else? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kim Walsh, I live at three twenty-four Inglewood Circle on Eagle Hills. I'm not on the golf course, I've lived there for twenty-three years, this is my second home that I purchased. I specifically purchased a home not on the golf course because I have dogs. I was aware of the covenants, I was aware of the city ordinance, so I don't understand why now people want fences on the golf course. I'd also like to thank the council for voting on the underpass for the bike lane, I am a cyclist and we do use all the trail systems, we go all over, so I do appreciate that too.
Going once, going twice. I see you thinking about it. Welcome. Thank you for your service too.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Black, and thank you, uh, to the city council for your service to our community. I'm, uh, Jim Smith and I live at nine oh four Bailey Drive, uh, one house over from, uh, Carla and Bob, so in, uh, in Western Hills. And, uh, Congress, uh, Councilman Mumgarth, we really appreciate your, your service and I know you're trying to do the right thing here. Um, in, way back in the day, I think, uh, Mayor Black and certainly, uh, Councilman Stube and I were on the planning commission and I know, uh, Mark Sterzma, uh, was very instrumental in helping to educate me on the, the processes of, of, uh, of, um, developing an overall master plan for our community. So I have a lot of trust in the planning commission and I'm just curious as to why we would not push this back. Um, I, I suppose I, I'm asking for a withdrawal of the proposed ordinance change and push this back over to the planning commission to use its expertise in sorting through this. I, I, I'm, I'm even questioning as to whether one, perhaps my side fence on a golf course lot might not- I'm even questioning as to whether perhaps my side fence on a golf course slot might not be in compliance. And if this were to go in that direction, I would be more than happy to remove that side fence. It was purchased that way, but I'm more than happy to comply with whatever the ordinance is. But I really trust the city Planning Commission, and I believe that that might not be a better place to get this sorted out so that the residents on golf course lots will feel like they have a better voice to remedy this situation. I certainly understand the balance between individual liberties and being able to do whatever you want with your property, but I also know that Papillion wants to have a quality community, and part of that is maintaining the municipal golf courses to the level of excellence that our residents desire, and also the property owners that are adjacent to that property desire. So I suppose that would be my, I understand the spirit in which you're bringing this remedy, Councilman Mungard, but I also hear from the residents here that they want something that is perhaps more thought through and that incorporates some of their considerations. So I would just encourage perhaps taking the steps to move this back to the Planning Commission and trusting their judgment to get this sorted through. So--
Mr. Mungard.
Thank you all.
I'll just ask you a question because I sit and if we're talking about the only remaining fence that would remain if my amendment passes, we're talking only about fences alongside the house. And I sit there and I think, okay, I'm in favor of the aesthetics of the golf course. That's one of the, one of the goals I had when I wrote the original ordinance. I'm in favor of not intruding on neighbors' view of that beautiful golf course. I just can't see how the fence along the side of the house that does not come back any further than that back of the house impacts either one of those things. So if you could help me out--
Sure.
See, I'm just not interested in passing an ordinance that doesn't seem to achieve anything.
Councilman, I may not be terribly in much difference with your remedy. It's more the process. So it's the residents that want to know that their voices have been heard, that have had a role in the process to bring about the remedy that reflects their voice. And, you know, at the end of the day, perhaps the Planning Commission brings back to the city council the exact same remedy that you're offering. But at least the residents that are here tonight are able to feel that their voices are heard and that we follow the appropriate process. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Welcome.
My name is Pat Murts. I'm 323 Castle Pine Circle on Eagle Hills Golf Course. And I guess my question is to Travis. Show me in the ordinance where it says you can have side fences because I've never read that in anything that's posted. There's not anything in the ordinance that says you can have side fences. I mean, I understand what we're doing here, but this is a waste of time. We're arguing about something that's already in ordinance that says you can't have fences. You're allowed to have a buried fence that no one can see, and now we're somehow, somebody, and I know how interpretations go because I deal a lot with it. They get misinterpreted because somebody wants something. That isn't what we're looking for. We're looking to not have any fences at all. Not any side fences, not any back fences, nothing. And we want it to say, we want the ordinance, if you can't modify the ordinance, we want you to change the ordinance that says no fences, period. We discussed this, and everybody got together. We had this meeting. We discussed it. Everybody said the same thing. We were all in agreement with this. And now we've got another modification to that. I just don't get it. It doesn't seem that hard.
Mr. Mungard. Okay. Anybody else? Welcome.
I'm Becky Kerr, and I live at 319 Inglewood Circle. And I guess I'm sitting here wondering, how many people are wanting a fence? And we're talking about all the people that don't want them. So to me, that says a lot. That's more than two or three that want the fence. Thank you.
Anybody else? Going once. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Regular agenda does have a motion to approve, but Mr. Mungard, you stated an intent for something, so did you have something?
Yes, I would move to postpone the third reading of the ordinance, of ordinance 1975, and the vote on that ordinance until the June 18th, 2024 Papillion City Council meeting.
So a motion to postpone until June 18th?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fanslow. Council discussion on the motion to postpone to June 18th. Mr. Sunday.
Thank you. I am opposed to moving or postponing. I'm against this motion. I'm going to vote against the motion. I'd like to vote against it tonight. That's all I have.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Fanslow.
So I seconded the motion just to get it out there. So I have a few things to say. I think if it's withdrawn, there's still a lot of confusion on the interpretation. So neighbors, everybody who's been here the last two weeks or last two meetings and years past, I think it's worth two more weeks to get this finalized. Because if it's withdrawn or we vote it down, we heard testimony today, we heard testimony two weeks ago that there's an indifferent interpretation of what the code says. So I know you've been here two meetings in a row. I don't think it's easy for me to say I'm going to be here anyway, but one more meeting to make sure we get this right once and for all. I personally have a stricter, and after our neighborhood meeting at Terry Hills Golf Course, I had a conversation with Travis the next morning. I have a stricter, if it were up to me, I have a stricter interpretation of what the code says. And that's my opinion. I haven't had a chance to talk that much to Travis about it. I think two more weeks, if we can get together with staff, talk it through. I think we'll have a better product in the end, and I'm, as we were walking up the steps, I told Pat and Pam that I'm willing to meet with the neighbors again between now and the 18th of it, in fact, is laid over. I don't think two weeks is too much to make sure that at least we're all informed. We all know what the opinions are. There's been, as we've said, there's been different interpretations. That's why I seconded the motion. I think it's worth two weeks to get this done one way or the other and then not keep having meetings and talking about it. So that's why I made the second motion.
Mr. Gaines.
Well, I think people, residents, have made an effort to come out the last couple of meetings. And I think that, I don't think another two weeks is enough time to address the concerns that I've heard. Generally speaking, if you go back on the record, you'll find that I talk about imperfect ordinances frequently. And I don't, I just, from what I'm hearing, and I don't live on the golf course. I don't experience necessarily what the residents do, but for what I'm hearing from the resident, this isn't necessarily what they want. It doesn't necessarily solve the problem. And so I'm going to vote against tabling it and vote against the ordinance also.
Mr. Stube, when we were in the public hearing, you'd asked Travis a question. Is that, do you still want to engage in that?
Yeah, and then I also have a comment.
Go ahead.
So my comment would be is that I agree with Mr. Fanslow because I think we've heard individuals in the audience tonight say that they've seen fences on the golf course. And so, right or wrong, the city has in the past permitted fences on the golf course. And my preference would be, is kind of in line with Mr. Fanslow, is that I'd prefer to see something more clear in the code that doesn't get into this situation where there is a difference of opinion relative to who is in the position within city government at the time that's reviewing those particular permits. So I want to support laying this over because I think we need to look at trying to make it. I'm a supporter of the individuals that don't want fences. I mean, I don't live on the golf course, per se, but I've lived in that neighborhood long enough to know that, and I'm the same way one lady mentioned about golfers. It's the experience on the golf course. I agree that, I think, we have great golf courses. I don't support making those golf courses in a situation where you have a potential where some fences could end up getting permitted in the future. So my preference would be is that we delay that, you know, a couple of weeks or whatever it might take to get this resolved. And I do want to get a response to that because obviously there was one citizen mentioned that people that have been permitted, that, you know, the city should do something about, you know, not allowing that perpetuation, but there is, I think, provisions within the code that address that, so.
Mr. Gibbons.
You are correct. So in the zoning ordinance, we deal with non-conforming structures, non-conforming uses. A fence would be considered a non-conforming structure in the case where if it was given with the permit back in the day, we would deem it a lawful, non-conforming structure. And the code states that non-conforming structures cannot be repaired or replaced unless it meets two criteria. That would be it was damaged by a fire, explosion, storm, or other calamity, or it was ordered to be repaired by the chief building official because of a life safety concern. So otherwise, other than those two calamities, those two instances, the fence would not be able to be repaired. It would have to then conform and be removed.
Well, I like to think that, I absolutely don't like complicating things. You know, the national level, everything is complicated. Everything takes forever. I'm going to support holding it over, and I'll tell you why. What I hear tonight, what I heard two weeks ago, is the residents, by and large, don't want fences in the backyards. Okay, that's simple. We change the ordinance that we have before us now. That makes it crystal clear we don't allow fences in the back. Seems to me like the only question now is the side yard fences. Some people now say they don't want those either. I would prefer we bring it back with the simple change that no fences, and make it clear, we've got a city attorney, we've got a planning department that is good, well, actually excellent, and they could certainly make a very plain-worded document, or ordinance that says no fences are allowed, period, in the back of the houses. And if there's still a heartburn about side yard fences, I don't hear a big hew and cry about it. From what I've heard and what I've gotten emails, it's primarily about the backyards. So let's get the ordinance back on the 18th because if we don't do that, that means if we vote it down, we start all over with public hearings again, and it gets drug out longer and longer. I think the people here would like to see it resolved now, not too much from now. So I'm going to vote support, holding it over. We make the change that you guys want, and we're done with it, period.
Mr. Sunday.
Yeah, Mr. Ingberg, with all respect, and Mr. Stube and Fanslow as well, what I've heard from these folks tonight is not only do they not like this, they want it defeated tonight, and they want to be a part of the process of drafting it the way they want it. And I don't frankly think it should be that big of a deal that you or I have to sit through it all again. That's what we're, that's why we ran for these offices, let me finish. It's why we ran for these offices, and it's our duty and responsibility. And I've said, from the time I first ran for office, and I've always said it, we need to listen more to the citizens that elected us. And I'm doing that tonight. I'm going to vote to not postpone and to defeat this thing so they can be a part of the process starting all over. That's not a terrible result.
Well, first of all, I don't like the implication that I don't want to put in the time. I've sat here for 32 years, and I've listened to a lot more public hearings than you have. So don't sit there and insinuate that I'm trying to save myself some work. It's pretty clear what these people said. They don't want a fence in the backyard. That's not complicated. If it was more complicated, yeah, let's start all over. Let's do the process again. But the process is going to end up being the same. No fences in the backyard. I'm trying to look out for their time. They don't need to be here over and over and over and having public hearing after public hearing when we can answer their problem on the 18th. Now, if anybody out in the audience wants to email me and tell me I'm all wet about that, fine, do so. And I'll bring it up to this council meeting to not take any action, and we'll start the process all over and have public hearings and everything else. I'm just trying to get this done because they've been waiting a long time already. But it has nothing to do whether I have to hear a public hearing again. I've already heard from the people, I think, and they made it crystal clear. They don't want fences, period. Thank you.
Mr. Sunday.
I just have to respond. I'm sorry. I'm mystified as to the anger because I insinuated nothing. You're the one that said we'll have to sit through this all over again. You said that. I didn't. So that's all.
Mr. Fanslow.
One last, yeah, thanks. One last time. My second of the motion was to hopefully resolve it in two weeks. I don't mind sitting through meetings. I don't mind doing any of that. But I think the fastest path, or the quickest path forward is to lay it over for two weeks and finally put it to bed. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote on the motion to postpone until June 18th.
Four yeas, two nays, by Sunday and Gaines.
Motion to postpone fails. Next on the published agenda is a motion to approve ordinance 1975 unless there's another alternate motion. Mr. Mungard.
I will just simply remind that if we approve ordinance 1875, we are not giving the citizens, the homeowners there, what they are asking for. So I proposed 1875 as a compromise with the deck situation. That is now completely gone, and we're talking about side yard fences. I guess I'm forced now to, in any way, if I want to in any way give these residents what they're asking for, I have to vote against that ordinance that I proposed. And we will start over again then, and perhaps never have a change. Who the heck knows? In the meantime, there will be two places on those golf courses where people can lawfully put a small fence and bring their dog next to the deck until we change the ordinance. That's just the way it's going to be.
To approve? And going once, going twice. So there is no motion to approve, so nothing else on the item tonight. Yes, Mr. Sunday.
Point of order, I suppose. Doesn't that defeat the motion, then?
That would be my assumption, but I'll look to the city attorney for clarification. Yeah. So then just procedurally, if a council member did want to bring something back up, then just like the original, bring it back to staff and they can work with that council member on an item. Item F2, ordinance 2020, an ordinance to amend Chapter 35 of the Papillion Municipal Code regarding procurement. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2020? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F3, Resolution R 240057, a resolution to adopt a procurement policy, FP 1006. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 240057? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Stube. You do have a memo at your desk. Staffs are requesting a motion to amend 240057, to amend the procurement policy, to add language under responsibilities, which then authorizes the city administrator to make administrative amendments to the policy unrelated to any dollar amount contained within the policy, and to authorize the finance director to make minor amendments to the policy with the city administrator's approval, and to add contractual services to the scope of the policy. Is there a motion to amend? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents-- Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents on the motion to amend? Council discussion on the motion to amend? If not, please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion is amended. Any proponents or opponents on the motion is amended? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next two items were from the last council meeting, and they were with the stormwater management, where Mr. Westergaard came and spoke to us. And in that, we tabled those items. So procedural Roberts Rule of Order, if we want to adhere it according to the city attorney, ordinance twenty twenty-two must be taken from the table before the public hearing can be reopened. And so a vote to take ordinance twenty twenty-two from the table. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Mr. Fanslow. Please vote. This will just remove it from the table.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We are on to F-four, ordinance twenty twenty-two, a public hearing and a vote. An ordinance to amend Chapter one seventy subdivision of land, Article four plat review and submittal requirements of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with the preliminary plat supplemental materials as it relates to the comprehensive plan amendments to adopt stormwater policies for the Papillion Creek and Southern Sarpy watersheds, the applicants, the city of Papillion, preliminary plat requirements. I'll reopen the public hearing, and if you remember the last meeting, Mr. Westergaard came in front of us, representing industry, and he had some concerns. Staff did meet with him after the fact, and there were some clarifications, and he was, he has withdrawn his objections, and I think you might have gotten an email or a letter in that regard. So all of the objections from Moba and Built Omaha have been withdrawn. So any other proponents or opponents? Any council, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Sunday. Any discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, and thanks to Travis and Mike Cleftner for meeting with him to clarify his misunderstandings. Same thing on ordinance twenty twenty-three. Again, we had tabled that. So is there a motion to take ordinance twenty twenty-three from the table? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Sunday. Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. So I have F-five, ordinance twenty twenty-three, a public hearing and a vote. An ordinance to amend Chapter two oh six stormwater management of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with stormwater permitting, regulatory action as it relates to the adoption of stormwater policies for the Papillion Creek and Southern watersheds. Reopen the public hearing. Again, Mr. Westergaard did withdraw all of his objections. Moba and Built Omaha are in favor, or not objecting. Any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Mr. Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F-six, resolution R-240097, a resolution to approve the inter-local agreement for continuation of the Papillion Creek watershed partnership. Is there a motion to approve resolution R-240097? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F-seven, resolution R-240098, a public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve an amendment to the comprehensive plan to update Papillion Creek watershed stormwater management policies. It's a public hearing. Anybody want to speak in favor or against? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve resolution R-240098? Motion by Councilman Fanslow? Second by Councilman Gaines. Discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Related item, F-eight, resolution R-240099, a resolution to approve the inter-local agreement for continuation of the Southern Sarpy watershed partnership. Motion to approve resolution R-240099? Motion by Councilman Fanslow? Second by Councilman Ingberg. Proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Also related, F-nine, resolution R-240100, public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve an amendment to the comprehensive plan to update the Southern Sarpy watershed stormwater management policies. Open the public hearing. Proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Motion to approve resolution R-240100? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F-ten, resolution R-240028, a resolution to approve the First Amendment of the Sarpy West Industrial Subdivision Agreement. Is there a motion to approve resolution R-240028? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Sunday. Proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. A lot of stormwater items tonight. F-eleven, and wastewater. Resolution R-240072, a resolution to approve the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agencies, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Motion to approve twenty-four zero zero seven two? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Stube. Proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We already handled F-twelve, so F-thirteen. Resolution R-240104, a resolution to deny the petition for annexation by Sanitary Improvement District Number two forty-five, SID two forty-five, and adopt the report required by Nebraska Revised Statute thirty-one seven eighty-four. Is there a motion to approve resolution R-240104? Motion by Councilman Mungard? Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Just for public education, since it is related to annexation, we do have a formal annexation policy where we review all SIDs every year. And then when the fiscal analysis shows that it's basically a break even, a proposal does come to the annexation committee. And then if they're approved, then a package of annexation does come to the full council. This was a petition by an SID outside of that process for an annexation. So that's why it was a separate item. F-fourteen, resolution R-24044, a resolution to approve an agreement for architectural design and construction administration services related to the police department expansion renovation project with Carlson West Pavandra Architects. Is there a motion to approve resolution R-240044? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. Committee reports, F and A met. Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. We had some items related to the master fee schedule. The first of which is the renewal of the watershed fees. Those fees are simply a pass-through cost to the NRD. Every five years, they change their policy and their circumstances, and so we also make our change, too. We recommend that go forward to the council. The second thing was adding the SCC WWAs sewer connection fees. And we've actually approved it as a council already on May seventh, council meeting. We've already approved it. But when we get the master fee schedule on a council agenda, this will be included in that approval process. The council's actually already approved the actual number, though. The final thing was add-on fees for pitching machine usage with the batting cages at the landing at the community center. The parks director informed us that they've gotten a lot of use, and it's really increased. As it is now, the pitching machine and the batting cages are for one price, one fee, to use both. However, there's a lot of circumstances where there's a parent, with a child, that it's just parent pitch, they don't use the machine, and other circumstances such as that. But because of their extra use, and as I said, they've been used a lot, there is more maintenance, more cost. So it was recommended to the committee to separate the fee for batting cages and for the actual pitching machine. It makes more, it makes logical sense, and it helps us maintain the equipment. And so that will be coming forward, that amount on the ordinance to update the master fee schedule. I will tell you that as far as pricing goes, for that split off of the machine and the batting cages are more than competitive with anybody else does right now. So I think it'll work out just fine. The primary user of the equipment at this point seems to be Papillion Recreation Organization Pro. So that's all. We had some discussion about danger stocks, stuff. We'll bring that back to the committee and talk about it further after some more investigation by staff. That's all.
Thank you very much. I think that's all the committees that have met. Any comments from the floor? Any council comments? Last couple of weeks, we did have a Sarpy, the South Sarpy Sewer Wastewater Monthly Meeting. Big item that came out of that, I think, is there's been a, if you've been to any economic development meetings or developer meetings, you've seen the stormwater management maps. And when we first came up with the agency, a lot of time was spent with landowners and developers to figure out where's the first infrastructure go in, because you can't build out the whole county at one time. And through that, we came up with a growth management plan that all of the cities adopted, and the agency adopted, which called for which land opens up for development and which is reserved for future developments. So then we knew where to put the infrastructure. And then in that, there was a phasing plan, a one A, a one B, and a two and a three phase. And the budgets were built around that. But I think in the last year, maybe eighteen months, because of a lot of discussions and potential developments, a lot of maps are floating around of what could the infrastructure look like? And that has actually added to some confusion, I think, in the marketplace, and even amongst the cities, where are we actually following the phasing plan? Are we trying to jumpstart a, maybe a phase two ahead of a phase one B? So we had a lot of discussion around that, and the clarification by the agency was, no, we're still working with the growth management plan. We're still working with the same phasing. The budget dollars are still with the current phasing. If there's a development need to jumpstart something, we'll talk about those, but we're not trying to upend the current phasing. So I think the agency's going to try to work on a more consistent map to remove any confusion from that. And so we'll be following that discussion real close. We had two Memorial Day events, one at the National Cemetery and one at the Fairview Cemetery with Post thirty-two. Appreciate those partnerships. We had the State of the County with the Sarpy Chamber, very well attended. A lot of it talked about the same things we talked about at the Housing Summit, if you were there. Some of the very similar updates from that. And then we had several ribbon cuttings. Couple of reminders, the next couple of weeks, Farmer's Market does start up again next, tomorrow. And then Thursday is the Vietnam Memorial at eleven o'clock. You should have tickets for that. If you have people asking, there's different color of tickets. Just kind of a reminder that the green ticket is the main part of the amphitheater on the grass. And so people may want to bring their chairs if they've got a green ticket, if they're asking you about that. And then there's a ribbon cutting on Friday with Quality Fence. And then next week, again, as Ms. Powers mentioned, starts Papillion Days. And so Wednesday, the last year, we started a tradition of a family night on Wednesday night as a kickoff in City Park, so we're doing that again. Reminders that the fireworks is Friday. I think some people were thinking it moved to Saturday. That is staying with Friday. And then again, the reminder, the parade moved to ten o'clock last year, and they're keeping it that same as well. And then the closing is at Sumter Amphitheater at eight o'clock with the Backband Concert, which I think they've done before. So any other council comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Sunday. Please vote.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.